Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 27, 2021 Board of Education. This is a public work session meeting tonight. Can I have a motion to retire to executive session to discuss specific personnel appointments and the IEPs of students?
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much. We'll see you at 7:30 for the public portion of our meeting. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 27 Public Work Session for the Board of Education. First hour apologies for running late. Sorry about that. Sometimes we have some topics we need to discuss. It takes a little extra time, so sorry for running late. We are virtual tonight due to the closure at the Southside High School. So sorry that we couldn't be in person together, but it is a public work session anyway. So on the agenda, you would notice that there's no opportunity for visitors this evening. However, what we've done is made our next meeting, which is on February 10, a regular meeting of the Board of Education so that we could allow for an opportunity for visitors. So our plan is to be back in person. That's always what we prefer to be. So we hope that you also join us on February 10 for a regular meeting. Since our last meeting, we've had multitude of topics come up that we're going to cover this evening, one of which is athletics. So we've asked our athletic director, Ms. Carol Rosetto, to join us. You noticed that she's on with us this evening. On behalf of the board, I'd like to acknowledge receipt of a petition that was sent to us on behalf of people supporting athletics. So we are in receipt of your petition, read through it, and understand your support for the athletic program. So we will try to answer as many questions as we can with having Ms. Rosetta with us and really get an update on where we are and what the plan is for moving forward. So without further ado, since we're running late, I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Chang, and we can jump right in.
Thank you, Madam President. Since we do have Carol here, I am going to just defer to Carol so that we could kind of get through the latest update of the information that we've received last Friday, particularly one that the high-risk sports for the winter season may begin at that time. We just want to be able to give some background in terms of how we got here, what we're looking to do, and what we're still waiting on. Because there is still that short period in which we're turning things around. Just reminding anyone, February is on Monday. When that comes around, that's the day that they set for us to be able to begin. I know the athletic directors are scrambling. I know the superintendents are scrambling. I also know that the health departments are scrambling. So just in terms of sharing some information, I will defer and yield the floor to Carol Rosetta.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Needless to say, it's been quite the whirlwind since the announcement last Friday. There have been many meetings. The Section 8 Athletic Director has spoken with the County Executive, Laura Kern, and the Board of Health Director. And the superintendents have met. The Athletic Council has met. The athletic directors have met. And today, we got an update from County Executive basically saying that we can move forward. We got the go-ahead to move forward with higher-risk sports. She said that Nassau County should follow the already published state guidelines, which I have in my presence. She stressed that individual school districts can decide what they specifically want, what higher-risk sports they want to offer, what additional protocols that are relevant to the specific districts that they want to put in, just like we did with the three sports that are currently moving. I was responsible to fill out a safety plan and send it to Nassau County Commissioner of Health and basically said that now with high risk, they're going to be doing spot checks to make sure we are following our safety guidelines. In regard to that safety plan, since September, if not before that, I have been working with my coaching staff. I asked each, either like Jaden Varsey or each sports-specific coach, to come up with what they see, how they're going to change what is a normal practice structure to what is the now required practice structure. And it is very different for each sport. So that's why I felt it was very important for each of the coaches to take the time even outside of their season. What's your new protocol is going to look like? What is it going to look like for you specifically in your? We usually have multiple practice environments, so in each of those environments. So we've been ready to go with that. And just generally speaking, it includes some of the things that I require for all coaches and athletes where upon entering wherever your practice is, hand sanitizer, temperature check by the coach, and daily attendance records. So we know if we have to contact trades. We know exactly who is where and when and why. If they are traveling on a bus, they are, the temperature checked and the hand sanitizer is done right at the entry to the bus. And then I created, I don't know, if you can tell, I created an actual bus chart, a seating chart, that for the season, for the smaller teams, it will be easier to do. They'll have assigned seats each day, and the coaches require just write the date. So their safety protocols, masks are on at all times. If at all possible, you know, there are normally, we're allowed normally 44 people to a bus, including the coach. This time, we're going to kind of focus on 22. So this way, every athlete will be seated against the window. Windows will be open, mask will be on, hands will be cleaned before they get on the bus. And we know that every athlete is feeling well and doesn't have a temperature before they get on the bus in close proximity. The actual practices will be redesigned with just spacing kids out more, trying to put kind of position-specific, if possible, and sport-related, in kind of cohorts. So if somebody in that cohort kind of, you know, gets contact, it's not wiping out the whole team. In certain sports, it's really not feasible. In other sports, it can be done. We've been, for like larger teams, we've been doing split practices where if you're in school, you're practicing from 2:45 to 3:45. And if you're out of school that particular day, you're practicing from 3:45 to 4:45. That's something like a track team where it's not, you know, you can't have basketball in split practices. Opening windows, especially if we're indoors, opening windows to have the air flow, just spreading out. Sometimes we, in past years, we've had higher numbers on the team. Sometimes, you know, we may not have that this particular year. The balls, instead of having baskets and balls where we're using 30 balls in a practice, we're going to limit it to six. So this way, we can control the cleaning of the equipment easier. So we're reducing the number of potential things that are passed between athletes. Instead of offering water like we normally do in the jugs or the squishy water bottles, every athlete is required to bring their own bottle. It's going to be labeled, and it's just theirs, and nobody else shares, and nobody touches it. So little things like that that amount to a lot, but all the little nitty-gritty stuff that we've worked on. So and each, again, each sport and each coach has worked with me to come up with something that's right for that particular sport because obviously not everything works for everything. So with that being said, we are ready to roll out high school boys' and girls' basketball on Monday. We've worked with the county and the conferences to adapt the schedule that was originally in place for January 4 to have a very condensed season, again, starting February 1. And it ends at the end of February, so it does not overlap with the start of the Fall 2 season, which is what we're calling it, which is March 1. Wrestling, we are still waiting on guidance because of the high-contact nature of the sport. So we're just, I expect to hear within the next two days what's going to happen specifically with wrestling. We are also waiting for Middle to Winter 2 higher-risk sports. We're waiting for county approval for that. It was tentatively set to start on February 8, but we do not have a start date yet. I believe that the ADs are getting a survey tomorrow, and then the Athletic Council will meet on modified Winter 2 sports. Starting March 1, football, boys' and girls' soccer, boys' and girls' cross-country, girls' volleyball, cheerleading, girls' tennis, girls' swimming, and boys' golf will begin. Starting March 22, middle school football, middle school boys' and girls' soccer, boys' and girls' cross-country, and boys' tennis are scheduled to begin. Starting April 22 is what's considered spring now. High school baseball, softball, boys' tennis, and boys' and girls' track, and boys' and girls' lacrosse will begin. And then starting May 3, middle school baseball, softball, girls' tennis, boys' and girls' track, and boys' and girls' lacrosse will begin. So as of now, safety, we're ready with safety protocols. Obviously, once, just like we did with the three sports that began, the first week, you know, best-laid plans, first week, we get out there and we see what we need to adapt as we go.
So Carol, you had sent a letter to the community, and thank you for doing that, which was helpful because it kind of let everybody know the status of what we were waiting on.
Yeah.
So just to kind of condense everything that you just said to one kind of line here. We've been given the green light to proceed with the sports that are able to start on February 1, and the district is prepared to move forward with those, with the exception of what I heard you say was we're waiting on additional guidance for wrestling because of the contact, which doesn't mean we will not have a wrestling season. It might just be modified version of wrestling. I heard you say that. And I'm picking up that there is not an approval for middle school's Winter 1 starting Monday yet?
Winter 2.
Winter 2, sorry, not starting, not particularly, have you been given that approval yet?
Correct. But that original start date wasn't supposed to be this Monday. It was supposed to be the 8.
Okay. So that we're just waiting on a little longer.
I expect to hear something, you never know, but I expect to hear something by Friday on middle school.
Okay. So because we know the way things have gone, let's talk through. We have the schedule. It's all kind of laid out, and I think it would be helpful to have that information accessible to everybody so that they know when these starts of the seasons are because it's very multi-layered from what you've just said. I guess a lot of parents are wondering, what happens if the rug gets pulled out from under us? We start these seasons, and then Board of Health or Section 8 pulls us out, and they say, it's not working. We can't, it's not sustainable. We can't do this. Does the district have a Plan B for athletes to possibly move forward with something that might be modified or different-looking than traditional sports seasons? I know that was a question that people were looking for. Maybe some assurance that these athletes were going to get some time to play their sports before this year was over.
It does come down to if we're 100% remote for the rest of the year, then obviously, there is no Plan B for athletics because there would be no after-school anything. So if Rockville Center shuts down, then sports would shut down as well. If by some chance, the Nassau County, with the approval of higher-risk sports right now, I highly doubt that Nassau County is pulling the rug out of anything unless we're all shut down, like the businesses were shut down like last year. But if not, then we could put in a, you know, the coaches are ready to go. We can do off-season-type workouts pending whatever the guidance is.
Okay. So with the guidance that we've been given right now, in your professional opinion, and Mr. Chang as well, you can chime in. Can we safely run our sports programs with everything that we have in place and adhere to the guidance that we've been given and let these kids play these sports? Can we do it?
Yeah. You know, I'm going to answer that question in the sense that everything we do from this point, from the beginning of the school year till this point, and then from this point on, especially with adding some of these additional normal aspects of high school routines coming back. I think we are going to do this with fidelity in terms of safety. Safety is going to be our number-one guide, and the health and well-being of our students, that's going to be our number-one guide. So based on what we've been able to do to get up to this point, if it ever got to a point where the safety parameters are looking like they're in jeopardy at a certain point, then we would make certainly the best decision within the best interest of the students and then have to shift and pivot. But right now, as we go into the higher-risk sports, is that to follow all the safety parameters that have been put out there by the state. And I think when we follow those, that we should be able to, you know, have some sense of normalcy back for our students with athletic competition as well as athletic practices. More so than anything else, I think, you know, we've heard many times over and over again, and having been, and I know I have several athletes on the screen right now who've been part of many things, whether by your kids or growing up, the sense of team and what the culture of what that breeds, I think, is what we want to try to get back to as best as we can and as we try to get out. I know we hit a little bit of a bump particularly within the last two weeks in our district, but you know, as the year goes on, we still have a lot of year left. So we're looking at any avenue to be able to bring back a sense of normalcy for our kids to the best of our ability, keeping in front of mind that we need to follow these safety protocols. We've shown that if we follow safety protocols in the classroom and do things that we should be doing, that first half of the year went, I would say, better than expected to get us to where we are right now. If we continue to do that, and we do all the right things, and we follow those steps, I think that's going to lead into these other additional normal aspects of high school life that we may be able to bring back. So that's kind of like what we're thinking about and what we're trying to keep in place. And like anything else we've done this year, we are, as you've heard, Carol, this isn't just because God, it came out that it was going to happen Monday, that this, we're going to start. There was a lot of planning, a lot of forethought in terms of how the practices would look like, what it would look like, a lot of what we learned from our gym and physical education, things that we were doing, a lot of what we learned throughout the course of the year. We're going to look to implement those things as we go into some of these sports seasons. So we'll continue to do that. But we, I come back to the point that we need to be malleable. We need to be adaptable. We need to be able to shift. And if that shift means that it's a safety risk, then we are willing to make that risk of saying, okay, maybe we stop here and we recess what we need to do moving forward, whether it's for the better or for the worse. I think we need to be able to adapt. And that's what this whole theme of this year has been, is to learn, adapt, and put things into place for the best interest of our kids, keeping safety in mind. So that's the message that we're putting out there. That's what we're going to try to do. And I believe, it's not just us, I believe it's a lot of schools throughout Nassau County that's looking to do this. And we're looking for any opportunity to bring back a level of normalcy for our students.
That is so refreshing and good to hear. And I know we're going to make many students happy out there that have been just craving and missing this, like I said, the team aspect, that coach-athlete connection is an important part of what we do here as well, and just being with their teammates and I agree with the normalcy and the mental health. So I'm thrilled to hear that we can do it. And I'm really appreciative of Ms. Rosetta's efforts of all the thinking that has to go into this. It's like starting school all over again and all the things that have to be thought of, down to the water bottles and the transportation and all of that. So I really appreciate all the effort. I would like to open it up to board members for questions for you. And because we're virtual and I can't look down the line, I'm just going to kind of look at people on the screen and offer it to you. If you have a question, jump in, but I'll offer it to Mrs. Barry, if you have any questions.
Most of my questions were answered. Actually, all of my questions were answered. So thank you, Mrs. Rosetta, for sharing all the information. I was going to ask about middle school timeline as well. So you filled that in, and we'll make that available to parents like Mrs. Hackett said. And just to reiterate, even if intrascholastic competition, for whatever reason, gets limited, I'm just happy to get our kids out and practicing and doing what we can to give them something back. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Farazani, do you have any questions for Ms. Rosetta?
Sure. I know some parents were concerned and asking questions about the capacity in the large gym and whether or not there will be any fans allowed, one parent per child. What's our capacity? How could we do that in terms of these different events? Obviously, it's different per sport and we're holding them, but people wanted to know about the ability to watch.
Well, one good thing that we've been able to do so far with, I'll use gymnastics and swimming, we were able to livestream or video with permission from the parents first. We were able to livestream and then download it to a YouTube private link and send it to the parents on the team. Something like gymnastics, that would be, you know, appropriate. Same thing with swimming. We can't really do it like live-lives, so we film and then get it out. Basketball, we are having a discussion within the county as well, so I'll have that answer for you. Right now, there are no visiting fans happening, but the discussion is, are we going to permit one or two parents or parents per our athletes in the gym? We have to figure out, I'm working with both of the coaches. We have to figure out literally logistics of the gym. So needless to say, we have a small gym, so we are utilizing, what we think we are, utilizing the big bleacher side with the bleachers in to have both teams because we have to spread out those kids, and we don't have six feet of space in between on both sides. So we're utilizing the big gym, and we're going to kind of stagger chairs for the athletes of both teams. And then we're trying to figure out where are we putting the table help? We now have to have two separate tables. We can't have the two teams' table help together. And then, and I'm trying to figure out if our small bleachers, take the, you know, 14, 15 kids times two, can we space the groups of two out across the small bleachers and be six feet apart? So all that logistics is being worked out as we speak, just like we did with gymnastics. So we will keep you posted with that.
Just to clarify again, Carol, we're saying that at minimum, we would be able to livestream and have videos out to our parents.
Yes. We just worked on the, for basketball in main gym, we just worked on the Pixelot systems. So we got that all calibrated and ready to go. It actually has a camera on the clock, and it has, it's a pretty cool system that we installed last year. And then it follows, it actually livestreams the game. That is through the NFHS company. And I believe it's like a $9 subscription for the season, if you want to buy into that. But we will also have it, and we will download it, and we can still do the link. So there will be two options. We are working on, we've been working on that for about a month now. But yeah, if there's no in-person or if multiple people can't see, we will, it may not be live at the moment. If we have a 7 o'clock game, you're going to be able to watch it at 7, but you will be able to watch the game. And we're trying to figure out opposing, like when we're away, how that's going to function. So all the schools are trying to work together.
Yeah. And Carol, I'm just going to put a plug in here because just because we, you know, as we start becoming a little bit more web-savvy, what we'll do is all this information that you're talking about is going to be available on your, on the athletic site. I want people to kind of drive themselves there and to look at the things and look at those links, and those things will be prepared and ready.
Do we have a schedule for the tryouts for each of the sports ready?
Yeah. Basically, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then the times the coaches will disseminate.
And in terms of how the coaches' applications are selected, do we post those somewhere? And what's the timeframe that we do that each year?
We post for the year, the year before, and at the beginning of the year. All applications come in, and then before the season, I post again or email again.
To the staff or do you post somewhere outside?
No, just to the district. And then if I, and then if there, someone doesn't fill, you know, if we don't have anybody from within to fill a position, then I usually email my colleagues and say, does anybody have a blank, blank coach? And then they'll send the applications, and it's a lot of word of mouth.
I think you've answered my questions. Thank you.
Terrific.
Liz, you want to go?
Mrs. Deon? Yes, thank you. Yes, I also will just say thank you, Carol. Any steps that we can take to make life a little more normal are good steps to take. So thank you so much. I know the one question I was asked is that, I think it was in Suffolk County, they're testing everybody on a weekly basis. Do we have any plans to do anything? Does Nassau County as a whole have any plans to do anything like that?
So the Nassau County Department of Health and Laura Kern, they have just given us the go-ahead to follow the 16-page guideline, which does not involve testing. So the Department of Health said Nassau County is not testing higher-risk athletes. They just have to follow the protocols and submit the action plan, or the safety plan.
Thank you.
Carol, you, I don't know if I missed it or not. We are starting wrestling and basketball on Monday?
We are starting boys' and girls' basketball on Monday, and over the next two days, I should have an update on wrestling. We need some more guidelines because of the, you know, the more higher-risk content of, you know, you can't be socially distanced when you wrestle.
Right.
So we're waiting on further guidance about wrestling.
And even, we can't even practice with social distancing on Monday, Tuesday, just to give the team a little bit more time together before they actually jump into a season?
I'm definitely not saying no to that, but we're just going to wait till tomorrow. You know, there's still a lot more talking happening. So I'm just going to wait for a little more guidance before we roll anything out.
Okay. And then, Mr. Chang, answer my question. We're going to post all those dates coming up in the future. And can we also look to maybe presenting a more prepared? I know, I know this came on Friday, and it's hard to get prepared, but the public is looking for some idea of how we're moving forward on different things. So if you could.
Well, I can do that now. I got, sorry to interrupt. I got the guidance from Mr. Pizzarelli at 2:10 today. So between 2:10 today and now, everything I reported was literally just confirmed. So before that, we didn't have information. I couldn't have shared anything because there was nothing to share.
Okay. Well, even going in the future, lacrosse and all those, all the seasons forward, that is all depending on if everything is picture-perfect and works out for us. But still, for the community to have an idea of what we're looking, how we're looking to move forward, it would be very helpful for them.
Okay. These seasons are actually posted on our athletic website, and they have been.
And then I have one more question.
I will absolutely update, and I can send an email as well. I mean, you know, an email update as well.
That'd be great. I have one more question. In the past, our sports have required a certain amount of practice time before our students could go and play a game, have a, you know, have a game. Is that condensed? Is that waived? Is that, so football becomes, football is the one sport that sticks out to me that it takes so long to get to the state where you can, the stage where you can actually play a game. How do we accommodate that?
The whole county is doing the same thing. It's 10 practices, and then you have a game. So basically, we start March 1, and then their first game is, I'll go with the 11th, if that's a Saturday. So it's all built into the schedule.
Okay.
And that was done by BOSEs and the conferences and the sport coordinators.
And is that the, is that the only sport that requires, you know, a long time for practices or a long?
No. Wrestling, gymnast, all of the higher-risk in terms of injury sports, so the more intense sports. So it's football, wrestling, gymnastics are the three that come to mind, and everybody else is like six practices. So it's six and 10.
Okay.
And we had that conversation in depth, and we felt that if it's not, in a normal season, if it's not safe for those type of sports to start in any game-like setting before 10 practices, it's not safe now under these circumstances either. So we collectively, even though people ask, we collectively left it at the 10 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Obviously, it's a lot of information, and it sounds like a lot of it's very specific to the sport. So I think we can maybe accomplish some things in terms of communications. There's some general things about how things will run that maybe we can come up with a short list of general items for athletes to know about how the seasons are going to progress. That might be for everybody. But then, could you just explain, and I know you might let me know, how the coaches are utilizing Google Classroom to communicate through Google Classroom per-sport-specific information to the families of any students that want to try out or are going to be part of the team? Could you just walk us through some of that communication?
Basically, you just said it all. Yeah. So some of the coaches, before, pretty much this season, most of the coaches have set up a Google Classroom for anybody interested. And then we put on morning announcements, and the coaches got it out to the players that played last year and just word of mouth. So anybody interested in joining football, join this. Not everybody uses Google Classroom though, so I'm using Google Classroom right now, but some of the teams had already established like a remind group or a group-me. So it's not necessarily all Google Classroom, but since the district almost went all Google Classroom since last year, we've progressed to that. So before the season, where we normally have in-person, anybody interested meetings, now they became the virtual links. So what I will do now, now that we got the go-ahead, I can actually ask each coach for their codes of however they communicate, and then I can. And then I can put that in the letter. So anybody that may not have already joined can now join.
Perfect. That would be helpful with the schedule that you kind of ran through for us, the schedule and the sports, the Google. I think there's more communication we can outreach because if you're new to our athletic program, this is a tough year to jump in and kind of understand where to find everything. So if they have questions also about their medical clearances, you had mentioned in your letter that they should email Tara Elgeriovento, find out the status of that. That was important that they have to revisit that as well. That's important because we're starting so quickly. They might do that sooner than later as well.
So I do want to clarify for anyone that got, for high school basketball or like the winter sports, if you were already cleared for January 1st and you did all your paperwork and you got that little white slip, that little white slip is now not current because it's been more than 30 days. So all you have to do is email Tara Elgeriovento and just say, just confirm that since you filled out the interval health forms, that no health issues happened and that you're giving her authority to change the date on your interval health form to the date of your email. And then this way you don't have to fill out any other paperwork. If you are not sure, if you are a current athlete and they're not sure their status, it is beneficial to email Tara today, uh-oh, today, tomorrow, Friday and find out. I know a few people are missing concussion testing and I'm literally trying to figure out how to do that while remote. So it may come down to Monday, right after school, anybody that's missing concussion. So I'm trying to work that out right now. For middle school, winter two, and for fall and spring athletes, we will have a physical clearance, a physical day where you can get your physical and more concussion testing dates. Those dates haven't been worked out yet, but I will get that word out to you as well and it will definitely be before your season. But in the interim, find out what you need so you know, you need what, you know, so you know what you need to do.
John, do you have another question?
No, that was, I was going to ask about concussion testing. It's found that they were not there if we can accommodate, you know, make a, maybe make special accommodation and you're working.
Yeah, I am making it work. I've been just doing single people, but since the building's closed, I wasn't able to do it. I was planning on doing it today, tomorrow, Friday, just to get it through, but.
I just had a question. Carol, you mentioned the safety plan that you have to file with the Department of Health. Will that be made available so that people can see it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think unless there's any other board questions or any other questions, I want to say thank you, Carol, again for everything, for getting our athletes this opportunity to get up and running so quickly as the short window. I'm thrilled for the students. I'm thrilled for the coaches. It's awesome to see some livelihood back at Southside Middle School and High School. So appreciative. I'd love to have you come back, maybe with some coaches and students, whether we're in person or on a live stream or virtual meeting as the seasons are going on so we can get some updates on how things are going. I'd love to, we miss seeing the students and hearing their experiences. I'd love to see also how our musicians are doing and our clubs are going. So maybe we can also bring some life to our own meetings again and hear about some of the great, normal things that our students are going to be doing. So on behalf of all of us, thank you so much. And thank you to the community for showing your swelling support for student athletes. We understand and appreciate your enthusiasm and we're very happy for our students. So thank you all. Thank you very much. And Mrs. Rossetto, you can tap out and enjoy your evening. Thank you very much. Have a great night, everybody. Good night. Thank you. So I know that we had also had comments come to us as a board about, you know, some concerns about moving along with sports when we're in this period of school closures and things. It's a perfect segue to kind of talk about, we have a group of people that would really love to come back full time and we have people that are concerned that, you know, what sports relationship is to that. I know that those are two very separate issues, Mr. Chang, and we've talked about those. So I kind of want to just get a status update. We know where we're at right now and it's been a hard couple of weeks, as you mentioned. We're hoping to turn that corner and go head towards a strong finish of the year. But if you can give us an update on where we are with the parents that are interested in bringing our students back full time. And then maybe we can also dive further into your letter that was recently talking about our, maybe some stricter protocols we've put into play to get us through this winter that were necessary because of, you know, rising cases and things like that. I think maybe we can kind of segue into some interests of the community.
Started talking while I was muted, sorry. Certainly, you know, it's kind of a juxtaposition that we're here talking about, you know, the addition of looking into normalcy in sports. And that's great news and people are excited to hear about that. And I know people are, and certainly our students are going to be excited to hear that. But you couple that with kind of what we are seeing in terms of not only Nassau County, but also what we're seeing in our schools currently. We are at probably the very apex of what we've gone through, of what I know Rockville Center went through in the first beginnings phases of this pandemic to where we are now. This is probably the height of where we've been. Our numbers have kind of fluctuated back and forth and it's given us some insight into what we need to possibly do differently. And I mean that in a general sense of all of us that we need to start looking at differently. And that means all of us need to kind of recommit again and just remember that we are still in this pandemic. All of us need to kind of take very seriously the guidelines that are out there because as I've been saying at every meeting and even in the letters that I've put out, what we do on the outside affects what we do on the inside. And in order for us to continue and maintain, and we want to be in person and we want to continue to look at avenues to be able to finish out this year strong, to even venture into that path of, you know, what the end of the year may look like, we need to get to a better place currently within the situation that we're in. So I am imploring everyone again to just follow the guidelines. Please do not go to large gatherings. Please take it seriously in the sense that, you know, each of our actions impact somebody else. And, you know, there is light at the end of the tunnel. We are looking at, you know, the vaccine that's phasing out and we know there's challenges with that. But we want to be able to, for us and as a focus as a school district, is to get to a place where it would be great if we could finish out the year with all the kids back. That's ultimately what we would want to kind of look out for. But we don't want to do that and make a misstep because we are in situations where we don't know the type of information we're getting. We don't know how to assess the situation because we're not clear in terms of where the contact tracing is happening. And we also aren't clear because of the numbers are so high. So what we want to do over the next couple of weeks is to see that number come down, people get healthier and, you know, get back to the numbers we were seeing early on. And we know that, you know, after the break and some of the things that were happening over the weekends have impacted us. We're also going into February break and we're going to the heat of the winter. So I want us to just be very mindful of that. So some of the changes that we've made is in order for people to stay kind of reminded of that, we're asking everyone to fill out the app on a daily basis. Please read through those questions. I know sometimes we just kind of look at it and say, I feel good, I'm going to press none. Think about how you're feeling. Think about if you have some symptoms. Now, the symptoms, I know people are worried about the variants and some of these other things that are going on, but have a conversation if you're not sure. Call our nurses, call in, say, hey, I'm not, I kind of have this cough. They may have some other questions to be able to ask you, to put you in a position to say, maybe today I stay home. If you're pending tests because you're not feeling well, please stay home, keep your kids home. You know, we'll make the availability of remote. We have the availability of, you know, being able to contact and connect with the teachers. We want to make sure that we are in this together in every step that we take. And then we could start talking about what, you know, what it looks like as we get out on the other end of the winter. And as, as I've been saying with the sports thing, same thing with the day-to-day life of our students, I want to bring back more levels of normalcy for them. That is the goal, is to get them back to feeling like they're connected as part of a community, get them back feeling like they are going through a teenage routine of what it feels like to go through high school. The day that we could get back to the age is a day that we could be extremely proud of and I'd like to get there sooner than later, but we need help and we need help in terms of getting those numbers down. You know, as we continue to talk, I've always said that we are looking at things from a month, week, even day-to-day basis. What we may think and what we may do may change based on the variables that are thrust on us. I would like those variables to be positive variables so that we could start making some positive steps in thinking and planning and moving forward. And we are constantly planning and moving forward. So if we could just get ourselves to a place where we were at the beginning of the year, fully committed, all together, keeping us in, I think we're going to end up in a place where we could start doing a lot more, not just with the athletics, but with all the other aspects from the, you know, 7:40 a.m. in the mornings all the way to the evening days where we may be able to incorporate so much more of the normal aspects of teenage high school life as well as, you know, our middle school and elementary school. So that's kind of like where our mindset is. We just want to implore everyone to do, do the things that we need to do to help all of us. We're in this together and that's kind of the message that I want to make sure that we go out with. With that, I also want to just share some numbers in terms of where we are. I shared some numbers at the high school level at the last board meeting. And I'm going to do this at probably every board meeting moving forward about looking. I know we give you the numbers of the positives and the active cases that we have, but I just want to give people perspective. I do mean that we do have a lot of stressors placed on us. We're doing things that we've never done before. It's a stress operation as well as people go in and out of quarantine. You could imagine what that does to our schedule. I was talking to our principals about coming up with, you know, what is the number? What is the number that you need to reach in order for you to be able to continue? And when does it put you at stress where you're not going to be able to staff up not having a teacher in the room? And that was a difficult exercise for them, even though I wanted them to come up with a number, looking at worst case scenario, it's a difficult exercise for them partly because there's so many moving parts with different people that can be in the classroom, with AIS, with the fluctuation of, you know, the aides that are in the classroom, teacher aides, who's going to be on remote. So there's a whole complex web that they need to think about. So you could imagine how many hours that takes up of their time. So, but those stressors are real and we want to try to mitigate those as best as we can. And the way we do that is by keeping our numbers lower. But currently, right now, we're looking at 462 students district-wide that are remote. And just this week alone, you know, because people move in and out of quarantine based on their dates that we quarantine, we are at 189 staff and students that are in quarantine. So, you know, that's actually, that's just the staff, that's the student number. I don't have the actual staff number for you currently right now, but the staff, the student numbers, we have 189 students, majority of which are, happen to be in high school with 98 members on quarantine. So that's kind of where we are in terms of the numbers. What we're thinking is we want to make sure that we could kind of get out of this wave, get us back, which is the reason why we took precautions because the quarantining and the contact tracing becomes much more difficult as there's more widespread gatherings and multiple people going to different places. It makes it difficult for us to get, you know, true concept of what the impact of contact tracing is. So we took a precautionary path because of the extent of contact tracing to remain remote at the high school level for the remainder of the, this week, and then come back on Monday and hopefully we'll be in a better situation then. So that's currently the state and the status that we're in.
You mentioned that, you know, we moved the easy screen, filling the app out to daily. So this is our first week and we know parents have to get used to it. So it might not be seamless going this week, maybe into next week, but we hope people will set their reminders and get in the habit, like you said, of not just kind of answering a blanket set of questions, but really thinking about it and keeping in touch with us. So just a couple of questions from there that I think we've been asked, so we should say here. If students are remote students, they should be filling out the app anyway so that we have an idea of our students and what's happening with our students, correct? So even the remote students are filling out the app every day?
I believe at the, just the remote students.
I'm being confused. Have been asked to fill it out.
Yes, the remote students have been asked to fill it out. I believe with the transition to every day at the high school, when you're in blue and red days, you are filling out if you're supposed to be.
Students are filling out every day regardless of the days they're physically in the building. But the students that are fully remote, I've heard that they've been asked to fill out the app. Is that correct?
I think maybe early on we had asked that, yes.
Are we just trying to get a temperature on our students because they're our students and understanding what our factors are in case they'd like to return so that we have data on those remote students? I'm just, I think there's a little confusion that we might need to clarify.
Yeah, so initially what we were doing was we were trying to get people just in the habit of getting into the app and understanding the questions. That was the initial flow of things. But then our concentration now has gone to people who are going to be in because there are so many people and we have lack of staff in terms of what we're looking at. So.
The full remote do not fill out the app.
Okay, there was an understanding by some from their school nurses that they should be filling it out as well. There was some misunderstandings, so I just want to clear here.
I read that in one of the notes from somebody that they are not filling it out.
Okay. So they should be filling it out before they enter the building, the people entering the building. But if you're hybrid, even though you're not entering the building on your off days, those students should still be filling it out before the day starts.
No, with the move to every day, we're asking people, if you're in with the red days, you do the red days. When you're in with the blue days, you do the blue days.
Okay. I don't know that that was clear. So I think the students that are not entering the building do not have to fill out the app on, if they're not going to be in the building, right? Correct? And then because we're looking to move through this painful period and get back to a better period, are we considering dropping back possibly and hopefully in the future? Is this something we're kind of doing right now because we feel like we need that data and we'll possibly move back to doing it every week if we can?
I think right now that we want everyone to stay reminded. I think one of the things that we want to make sure is that regardless, there are gaps here, right, throughout the course of this year. We know that it's going to take some time for people to get vaccinated. It's going to take some time for school districts just to kind of get through the remainder of the year. So what we're looking to do is to do it every day and that's kind of the goal right now, is to do it every day. Certainly nothing's off the table, but I think the reminder of every day, keeping it in front of mind is the goal of what we're trying to get to here. And to get good information, we want people to think about it when they're not feeling well.
Okay, thank you. I know that those, some questions that came up from us changing that, so thank you. I'm going to go to the board to see if they have questions about the new protocols, the stricter kind of protocols we had put out in terms of just, you know, easy screen. And I know that we've had some closures, so people might have some questions. I'll go to Mrs. Barry.
Thank you. Yeah, I had similar questions about the app as well. But just to clarify, if a fully remote student is going to participate in athletics, they should probably be filling out that app prior to coming to school grounds to participate in athletics, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. That's probably another added communication that we should follow up on.
I think that's going to be part of what we put on the athletic page. I think if you are going to be there.
Right, because they're not going to be filling it out for school. I understand that. If they're coming to school grounds to participate in sports, it would be important for us to have that data.
So that would be the same for the hybrid students as well, to Mrs. Barry's point. If a red student's coming on a Thursday or Friday to practice, that was why I thought that we were looking for the students to do it literally every day. But we might have to then make sure, at least to her point, that the athletes are arriving at campus having had that done.
Yeah, and I would imagine that the red and blue hybrid students should be filling it out every day so that if we had to go back in time to contact trace, that would be useful as well. And then the other question I had about the high school as of now, we're operational on Monday, that was answered, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Farisani, any questions?
I'm just trying to make sure I understand the app situation. So as it stands now, if you're a red student or you would answer the questions the morning that you're going into school as red, unless you're an athlete and you're coming to school that day for some sort of practice, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there in the morning or do they answer in the afternoon when they're coming for a sport?
Right now, it's the morning.
Thank you. Mrs. Deon, any questions?
No, I think Mr. Chang got them all. Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Shea? Mr. O'Shea?
I do have a bunch. When when we decided to close the three schools, a lot of people reached out to me and asked me how and why we came to that decision. And I don't know if you can synapse it or, you know, just to explain that, just to, you know, just to help the people that reached out to me.
Sure. What what happened was there there's causality in terms of, we're talking just let me just talk about the high school here. We're talking about the causality of the the positive tests that were coming and the amount of people that were being quarantined. The people who went out on quarantine were now starting to test positive, and the numbers started getting at getting to a higher rate. And when we looked at that number, sat together with the district medical officer as well as John Murray Murphy, and then we made a decision that those numbers are starting to constantly come in with the positives of people who went out on quarantine. And again, not knowing exactly how the or how far the extent of the quarantine, the contact tracing was, we decided to take a cautious path and close those additional three days.
So and so that the factor, it it includes students and staff when we when we make that decision?
Majority of the time, yes. Yeah, actually, all the time, yes. They those are the two major factors. And sometimes it could be just the staff, and sometimes it could be the growth of the number of the students. But they're they're kind of one in the same because there's some contacts with teachers and all these other things that happen.
Some people have questioned me about our guidelines for contact tracing, how they seem more you know, the Nassau County Department of Health has something and we're doing. We're doing more. Are we? Were we stricter? Or do we look at it different than the Nassau County Department of Health?
No, we get, we work directly with the Nassau County Department of Health in in terms of getting the contact tracing and then identifying who those who those contacts would be. Now, every situation is different based on movements, based on how much time. The two parameters that the we've consistently looked at and we vet out with the Department of Health is the distance, which they said is the major factor, the six feet within the six feet of distance, and the amount of time that they've been together in that space. So and then we vet that and we have those conversations with the Department of Health before we make any decision moving forward.
So our our decision or our guidelines are very much in line with what the Nassau County Department of Health would, you know, would be. It's not, we're not. We're not doing anything different than what they ask us to do.
No.
That's it for now. I just, I mean, it's it's when they, when I had a whirlwind of questions when we closed the schools, it seems like that was a year ago. So much so much happens in this much time, it's hard to keep up on those. So so as of now, those, you know, we have answered all those questions in this conversation tonight already.
Okay, thank you. I know it. It's hard because there's maybe general questions about it, but every situation seems so different that I think every time we find ourselves in this and there's a contact tracing scenario, they don't, I don't, I think they're kind of no two look exactly the same, and that's a hard question maybe for us to answer. I know that Tara and her team are working really hard, and it's it's a yeoman's task, and it becomes harder as the cases are rising. So we ask for people's patience and understanding, and it's it's tough on the kids. We understand being quarantined. It's hard on the staff to be quarantined, especially for people just coming to work and to school. So it's trying on everybody. It's trying on the staff working on it. And we understand, we really do. It's not an easy situation. So if you do have specific questions regarding your child, you can contact your building principal or your building nurse, and they will definitely help you out and navigate it for your child. Mr. Chang, did you have any other reports during your superintendent opportunity?
No, that was just the update that I wanted to give for today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just to look ahead, to let the public know, for the next meeting, like we mentioned, it's going to be a regular meeting. We are going to be putting calendars up. There was a couple of people in the community that asked us when we would be adopting calendars, so that will be on the agenda for the next meeting for anybody that's interested in that particular conversation. And because tonight is a public work session, any policies that are being put out further in the agenda will have the opportunity to at least go through two cycles of a regular meeting before they're put up for approval. So I just want to make sure that that's clear also to the public. We're putting up a few tonight as a first look. We'll determine as a group if we would like to move them forward, but they will go through two passes on regular meetings before they're put up for approval. So that's just a look ahead. We didn't have as many committee reports tonight as those in the past, but we did have our finance committee had met since our last meeting. Is that going to be given by Mrs. Dion or Mr. O'Shea? I think Mrs. Dion, correct?
Mrs. Dion.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. The finance committee met on Monday, Mr. Bartels, Mr. Shane, myself. It wasn't a really long meeting, but we went over some important things. State aid numbers came out last week. They were reported in Newsday, and please, Mr. Bartels, jump in when I say something wrong. They were reported in Newsday, and it looks like we're about a percent down from last year. But unfortunately for us, the state aid numbers that they were comparing for last year are down about a million dollars from where it was originally budgeted. Some of that is just because we didn't spend as much money on things like transportation and B O Cs last year due to the pandemic and the early shutdown. So because we were down nine hundred thousand dollars where from where we were projected, our actual state aid for next year is about seven percent lower than what we thought for last year. Is that correct, Robert?
Approximately, yes.
So. So that's where we are. And I think they'll still continue to talk about it, or do we think that these are about the right numbers?
Well, we're certainly hoping that the the state legislature changes the way the formulas run. So the the biggest change that the governor made in his projection was to take a number of those expense driven aids, like we spent on B O Cs and transportation, and make it into kind of one single block aid and then base it off of last year's expenses. So virtually every district in the state had fewer expenses in transportation and B O Cs. So by doing that, he's kind of automatically giving himself a reduction. So if we go back to our expense driven aids, those that aid for next year should be much higher.
Right. And this is something Governor Cuomo tried to do last year by taking our expense driven age and collapsing them into one to one aid that has been that he then can cap. Fortunately, last year, our legislators chimed in and said, no, we we don't accept that. So we're sort of, I think, we'll we'll speak to them next month or in March saying, and I know Nassau Suffolk is speaking with them, hoping to switch that because I think that's very important because it's a that aid is based on how much money that we actually spend. So it's a very important part of our aid package.
Right. The other key piece that's in there is he seems to indicate that he expects districts will be made whole this year. So if you recall last year, we talked about the governor withholding monies. So districts should be made whole this year through the CARES Act grant and the stimulus money. There is a withholding for next year of one point two million dollars. And again, that's going to be based on federal stimulus money. If we get what they're hoping we're going to get, that that money should not be withheld, similarly kind of what they did this year. But we'll see how that that goes. We're hoping we get that stimulus money as well.
Yes, that's a significant amount of money.
Yes.
So there was that conversation. We also got our fiscal stress and environmental stress report. About two years ago, we were designated as susceptible to fiscal stress. This year, we have no designation. We've dropped in our points. I I think we're if you're designated for susceptible to fiscal stress, you're over thirty points. Two years ago, we were thirty three points. This year, we're six point seven points. We are looking at a bit of an increase for points for next year due to the fact that we increased our borrowing this year. Again, that goes back to the fact that the state withheld monies from us, but it does not appear that we will be under any fiscal stress.
Even with a few more points, we should be nowhere near the designation level for fiscal stress.
So, which is, thank you very much. That's, we appreciate that. We seem to have a new indicator that the that the state has given us, which is called environmental stress. Environmental stress measures several things that really had nothing to do with money or finance. It's how much your budget passes by and what your class cap is or how many, what your class size and several other things that have to do with the school district as a whole. We received ten points because our our budget passed by what they consider only sixty one percent. My book, I thought a sixty one percent passage was a really good thing. They seem to think it's like eh. So we got ten points. It doesn't mean we're designated as anything. And it's a whole new, it's a whole new thing to talk about.
Yeah, they they started this environmental stress a couple of years ago. We haven't had any points in any of the different categories up until this year. So I thought it was important that we mention it. The state will be coming out with these for districts, so I'm sure Newsday will have some report. Some districts are going to be in there. So people had questions about Rockville Center. That's where we are. We we should not have any designations this year in either of those categories.
But now we not only have to worry about passing the budget, we have to worry about passing it bigger.
That's right.
It penalizes us.
Right? Is it? You have to pass it by seventy percent to get zero points.
Yes, you have to be over seventy percent.
Does anybody do that in the state?
We can do it, John. It will be all under less stress this year.
I think sixty one was a miracle.
I know sixty one was really impressive. I don't know.
Considering it got kicked down the road and it wasn't even a normal year where people could, you know, come and do it in person, hopefully, maybe we'll get zero points next year.
Yeah.
Speaking of budget season coming up, so our community can look forward to lots of Mr. Bartels in the future. We're all excited for our budget reporting and our budget planning to start, though I know that you've been working on that for months already. So I know that's coming up. And I think that, Mrs. Wong, we had gotten word that everything's running on time so far for the annual election and the budget vote, right? We're still they're still scheduled for May as of now. They've not changed that date or anything like that, the timeline.
That is correct.
Okay.
But they still haven't. Are we? Oh, do we think we're going to be live or there's?
I have asked, and as far as anybody knows, it's expected to run as usual. But they changed it last minute last year, so.
Yes.
We did talk about it at Nassau Suffolk, and I think everybody's, everybody's hoping it's live, but I I think other elections were run run live, so there's no reason to think that it shouldn't be.
Might just be an increase in absentee ballots, but if they can run it live, I know the village had done theirs live as well, and that you can still do absentee ballots, so there could still be a combination. But if they can stay on schedule, helps us a lot with our planning, especially when your fiscal year starts July first, and we ran literally right into it last year. So running on time would be a luxury. Thank you. Any questions for the finance committee? Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work. We're going to move on to our policies. And Mrs. Dion had given us a policy report in the last meeting, kind of teeing us up for this week, letting us, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Leahy, who did a lot of work on these policies for us. And thank you, Dr. Leahy, for all the back and forth he did with our council on these. So I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so there's two policies up for review. The first is policy thirty four twenty one, which is a new policy that we received from Air One B O Cs. And it it involves, the reason for the policy is that it reflects amended Title Nine regulations. The Title Nine was amended in effective August of twenty twenty. And so this is the policy that they have put in place to ensure school districts are compliant with that policy. I'm just going to tell you that thirty four fifteen is a related policy. Thirty four twenty one is Title Nine and sex discrimination. Thirty four fifteen is our sexual harassment policy. Thirty four fifteen, I've just as, just to remind the public, we used to have two different sexual harassment policies. We had seventy five fifty one, which was the sexual harassment of students, and sixty one twenty two, which, I'm sorry, that's the wrong number, seventy five fifty one and sixty one twenty one. Seventy five fifty one was students and sixty one twenty one was a general sexual harassment policy, which really related to adults, employees and adults in the community. So a year and a half ago, we had done some work with Ingrid Smith to merge those two policies and make one sexual harassment policy that reflected our the regulations and laws around sexual harassment, both for students and adults. So thirty four fifteen is back on for review because we wanted to make sure that thirty four fifteen reflected all of the recent changes in the Title Nine legislation and that we had consistent language, language between the two policies. So that's why they're both up at the same time. Thirty four twenty one, which is the new policy on Title Nine, I just, I'll just briefly, just for the information of the public, tell you what Title Nine, what changed in Title Nine. Basically, for the first time, it recognized that sexual harassment, including sexual assault, is unlawful sex discrimination. And previously, sexual harassment was really just adjusting guidance documents, not under the law. And so they put it, made it legally binding, these these amendments. It defines sexual harassment more specifically. It requires districts to promptly, to respond promptly to sexual harassment complaints and not show deliberate indifference when there's actual knowledge of sexual harassment. It requires districts to treat both complainants and alleged perpetrators the same way. It requires, it distinguishes between reports of sexual harassment and formal complaints, and that's a big difference in what would happen as a result of a formal complaint. It creates a new grievance process for addressing those formal complaints of sexual harassment. It changes the requirements related to training. It used to be periodic. It is now annual. Record keeping and policy publication requires that any provisions, rules or practices other than those required by regulation that a district adopts as part of its grievance process applies equally to both parties. So that's just the summary of all of the changes. It's a very long policy that we had our district council review for us.
And just to note, too, when we've gone through some of the lengthier ones in the past, we hadn't had a policy committee. So it's gone through some iterations because we've had eyes on this one for some time here. And again, thank you to Dr. Leahy for going back and forth with our council, and Mrs. Wong for making the changes. Mrs. Dion and I are also on that committee along with Mr. Chang, so it's gone through at least some some oversight already to get to the stage one. I know it is a lengthy policy, but I'll just open up to the board for any questions or clarification that they feel they need before we decide if we'd like to move it forward or not. Any? No. Any objection to moving it forward to stage two? Okay, thank you. So we'll move that one over to stage two. And then there's a corresponding form, which is the Title Nine Formal Complaint Form, which is thirty four twenty one. Dr. Leahy, I don't know if you want to add anything about that, or if we should just jump into it. Up to you.
I don't think there's anything more to add other than it is also reflective on all of the aforementioned changes to the regulation.
Okay. Okay, any questions on thirty four twenty one F? Okay, any objections to moving that one forward as well?
Me.
All right. Thank you so much. So moving on, stage one, we have thirty four fifteen, and this was the one Dr. Leahy mentioned. We had actually recently looked at that one, I think, the last year and a half or so ago, and that one, we had been combining different policies into one. So we had our council take another look at this one and make sure this one was up to date. Dr. Leahy, any comments on this one?
No, just again, just to make sure we had consistency in language and that it was reflective, if if in any of the language of the sexual harassment policy that was reviewed by Ingrid Smith, if anything had changed since then. policy that was reviewed by Ingraham Smith, if anything had changed since then, reflective of the Title IX amendments, we changed it again in this policy.
Okay.
But it was pretty current, frankly, in terms of language because the lawyers had really just looked at it a year and a half ago.
Right. Yes, I remember on this one, we were adding discrimination and harassment in pretty much every instance that it said one, it says the other. That was, I think, the biggest change. I know, again, a 13-page document, but the biggest change that we had gone through through the policy committee. So, any questions on 3415? Any objections to moving that one to stage two?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, a corresponding form, 3415F, that was associated with this particular policy. I'm just clicking that one open. And this one, right, we just had talked about, instead of reasons for dissatisfaction, we basically asked if it had been resolved. If not, why? Why not, had it not been resolved? That was really the basic change to that. Any questions about 3415F? Any objections to moving that one forward? Okay, thank you. Now, Mrs. Wong, I see on our online agenda, we have 3420 on here. On my printed one, I didn't have it. Are we moving forward with 3420? I'm sorry.
No, we're not.
We're not? Okay, so I'm just looking at.
That one needed more language.
That was the one that needed more language. Okay, so we'll look at that one at the next meeting. So, that concludes what we're going to be looking at in terms of policies. Again, we'll make sure all of these go through two iterations before they're looking for approval. Okay, so we're going to move on now. Oh, one thing I just also wanted to say, last meeting, and I didn't mention it, you know, sometimes when we're in a very large auditorium, I can see the seats, but you couldn't all see them at home. And I had a question asked, how come I didn't open the microphone for opportunity for visitors? I wanted to just mention, we didn't have any visitors at our last meeting. We hope you'll join us next time. But if we didn't open the mic, that was the only reason why we do like to hear from the public. So, since there is no further business, I'm going to go into board actions. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, January 14th, 2021? So moved. Okay, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept a receipt of financial reports as listed?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And can I have a motion to approve Board Actions A through E plus the addendum to the P A R? Can I have a motion?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Robert, I'm sorry, I didn't, are the backyard players, it's for Center Stage. Okay, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
I answered, in reading it, I answered my own question.
Okay, so on.
Wait, I'm just sorry. We didn't speak about this. What is the plan for Center Stage this year?
Well, it's going to be the first in-person performance after the pandemic. We hope. We are planning for, wouldn't that be lovely? Mr. Murphy and I fantasized about that daily, that we would have Center Stage as the first return. I think that'd be really awesome. But we're planning on, we're working with Mrs. White and Orion Delaney, Ms. Healy, and the rest of the team, Ms. Mansour, on putting together production. We certainly hope it will be in person, but we're prepared to do another virtual performance if need be. But we are going to have another Center Stage performance this year, one way or the other.
Good to hear. I like that progress. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. I'm going to look for a motion to retire to executive session to discuss a legal matter.
Madam President?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind through the president here, there is one thing that I would like to just kind of highlight, which I should have done in my reports, but just kind of, it was a long day and there's a lot of things that I was thinking about. But several years back, as you know, I was a Holocaust educator for some time, and I used to take kids over to Europe and to study the effects of the Holocaust and the nature in which they've gotten to this point in the modern era and World War II and all those impacts. Today happens to be International Holocaust Remembrance Day. And one of the things that have always impacted me is when I walked through Auschwitz, they had an exhibit a few years back that was installed that was called "The Book of Names", and it was all the names of the people that were impacted and that were murdered essentially by the effects of the Holocaust. And I just wanted to reflect on that moment, particularly today, and to also to be able to say that as RVC, we recognize and that we do remember. And that's the important piece, is that we remember and that these lessons are taught. So, I just wanted to put that out there for the public and things that we think about and do.
Thank you. It's important lessons. Thank you. I'm going to return to asking for a motion to retire to executive session to discuss the legal matter.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, any opposed? All right, our next meeting is on February 10th. We hope to see you in person for a regular meeting. Be safe, be well. Thank you for joining us, and have a good evening. Thank you.